Come to order, could I have a roll call?
John Aikman.
Steve Caswell.
Michael O'Brien.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
And if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates. I'm sorry. It'll be Tuesday, May 16th, right Pam? Okay, Tuesday, May 16th and Tuesday, June 6th. Bear with me, I'm just updating this. And I'm, I did not get a chance to read through the minutes yet from March 21st, so if it's all right, we'll hold that over. The first item on our agenda, I understand that we didn't have everything we needed to be able to bring them in front of us tonight, so we're rolling that over to our May 16th meeting. So that brings us to our second item, which is our discussion for the Montage FSCIS, 128 lots on Route 52.
Good evening.
Hi.
It's nice to see you all again. I am Dominic Cordisco from the law firm of Drake Loeb in New Windsor, and I've been representing Charbel Development for a number of years. I was a young man when I started, and I don't feel that young anymore. In any event, it's good to see you all again. And we have our team with us tonight, Tom Troy, Principal of Charbel, Mark Canouli as well. And Mark Day is our engineer, and John Collins is our traffic consultant. And we're all here because we've prepared, I believe, the fourth draft of the final environmental impact statement. It's the final supplemental environmental impact statement. We, I've also brought Charlene Kohler, our stenographer. So we want to make sure that we have all of your comments, and we'll provide a copy of the transcript to the planning board once we have it as well.
All right.
So we have all of those down. It makes my note-taking a lot easier, so.
That's fine.
In any event, as I said, I think this is the fourth draft of the final supplemental environmental impact statement that we've provided. We provided both a red line and a clean copy, so that you could see what changes have been made since the last draft. We've also received the courtesy of comments from the board's planner, as well as engineer. And so, at this point, we would like to hear any comments or questions that the board may have. But before we do that, I'd like to turn it over to Mark Canouli, who can walk through the comments that we've received from the board's consultant.
Okay, and if I could, what I'd also like to do, because we've got a few members who probably haven't heard much about this application before, they're new to the board since the last time we've seen it, so if we could just have an overview of the project, kind of orient us with what it is.
Sure. Mark, would you like to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be war and peace, but.
Yes, no, and I forgot to mention that I do see new faces here, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Canouli with Charbel Development Corporation. We'll use the color exhibit. The project is located at the intersection of 216 and Route 52. It's approximately 340 acres that we would be purchasing for the subdivision. As you recall, this was originally a project that was a senior housing job years ago. And we went in a different direction back in 2007, 2008, in an as-of-right plan with a cluster subdivision. Here you have 122 cluster lots. They range in size from 80 feet to 90 feet wide, to 110 to 120 feet deep. So they're all single-family homes. The main access is at the intersection of Route 216 and 52. That's upper, in the upper left-hand corner of the exhibit, and there's a proposed master plan road that connects three separate phases of the project to the adjacent Summit Woods property, which is 172 or 175 single-family lots, similar in size. There's a road proposed to connect to the Montage at East Fishkill in our last phase, and that road would then connect through Summit Woods out to Route 52 for another access into, into the project. There's been discussion about that road as a secondary means of access. There's been discussions in the document about if our project were to go forward prior to Summit Woods, how would that occur? And just to let the board know, we've had many discussions with the Summit Woods folks, to the extent where we even have a developer's agreement that allows certain things to occur. And at the request of your professionals, we'll even have another amendment, one-page amendment, to clarify the usage of that access road, which could be an emergency road. So we're in the process of working with the DEC, the Fish and Wildlife folks, the DOT. Who else am I missing? Porta Health, all of which we've been doing through this process, and the board has asked that we include you in key meetings. Since the last submission, there has not been any key meetings outside of emails back and forth. Every email correspondence between us and an official with the DEC, or a representative of Dutchess County, all of those emails were printed, and they're included as, as part of our appendix. So you can be, you know, kept up to speed with everything we're doing. They're really just asking for clarification on applications we've already submitted, things that you've been, we've been discussing with you over the course of the last few years. So that said, I think that's really just where we are with that. Did you have a question, Mr. Brown?
I did. I mean, I know, that was one of the points. I mean, how did the, how did the professionals come to be excluded from some of the meetings?
I honestly don't believe that they were excluded. In fact, I can, I can go back and show you at least correspondence between us and our engineer and the DEC on items needed for our application that was, that were, that were submitted years ago. This is when the project was a different project. Those files were started five years ago. So just to the point, there, there may have been a, there was a key meeting years ago in Cortland, Cortland? We all drove up there, we invited a few people, and there was a letter after that that we were proceeding without the town's endorsement, if you will. I think at that point, we all addressed that, and that was, that was the third submission of the FEIS. We agreed at that point that any further key meetings that we had, and we haven't had any, I haven't been, I haven't been to any. And if we had, they were with Mr. Day, Scott Bryant, regarding this third alternative for sewer. So, and I wasn't at that meeting, but I know Mark attended, so. Other than that, I really honestly haven't.
I know that was one of the points, and I didn't see it addressed in one of them.
Right.
So basically, there have not been any significant meetings since that point was made. Thank you.
So we received two letters, one last Friday and one today.
Okay, I'm going to ask you, just hold that thought for a minute. I know we have some folks that are new, but do you have any questions about the project itself or anything before we move into some of the items that our professionals have highlighted in their letters?
I don't think so.
Go ahead.
The 122, as-of-right. You know, I went back and looked too. You're right. I mean, there's a wealth of materials. Is there agreement, 122 is the right of, the as-of-right?
The way it works with a cluster subdivision is, first you figure, you lay out a conventional subdivision, and then the number of lots that you can get with a conventional subdivision, then, then you can equate that to a cluster subdivision. When we originally received the application, and this is years and years ago, we haven't had this discussion in a while, we were uncomfortable with some of the, I guess configurations of the lots and the layouts of the lots. So at the time, we agreed to table the lot discussion and just choose and analyze the maximum number of lots that were shown on the plan.
We were at 135 lots, just so that you get, that part was clear.
Okay.
And we worked through this with Joe Dennis at the time, and Mark Day, analyzing how the as-of-right plan, the larger lot plan, could work, how you could develop that, before you get to this as-of-right number. We realized that we were, we were not going to achieve the 135. So we agreed, and this is, this is, I mean, I have the transcripts of this meeting, where we agreed that the maximum we would get under this scenario would be 122 lots. We actually, you know, reduced that lot count, the as-of-right plan, down to 122 lots. That was what we used to go forward. We actually analyzed in some sections the 135 lot plan, when it had to do with impacts with traffic and those kind of things. So we did more of an analysis, or, you know, we took into consideration a greater impact, if you will. But we agreed on 122 as our maximum number. So, I mean, that's, that's been discussed and agreed to.
Right, so what we, what we decided, because we, we didn't want to, we felt like it was no use in having this conversation until we actually knew what was going on.
We don't need to settle on the final lot count.
Right, exactly. So we, we did, we said, there's no worst-case scenario. Worst-case scenario, we'll, we'll study the worst-case scenario, and then it will be up to 122 lots ultimately, which would come out during the, the actual subdivision plan review with the planning board. You know, looking at all the individual subdivision lots, making sure that they meet all the setbacks and all that kind of stuff. But that was sort of tabled, and we decided for Seeker, we would, we would go with this, this number of 122.
Thank you.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Michelle, that kind of brings up another point, just again, we have, bear with us, we have some new members with the board, so maybe if you could just explain, this may be the first environmental impact statement that some of us are reviewing, the extensive ones. So maybe just give us, here's where we are in the process, and here's what the planning board would do next. Because I think, you know, we're not settling on a final subdivision layout yet, that's all to come. So if you can just kind of walk us through sort of where we are and what, what our next steps are, what the planning board's responsibility is.
Tom, you can jump in if I, if you need to. I, at this point, we're sort of at the, I would say, more than three-quarters point in the process. We studied all the potential environmental impacts of, of the project. The applicant provided a lot of information about the potential impacts related to traffic, to wetlands, to the bridges and road crossings, to, in some cases, the water and sewer. There's been some changes to the project that have necessitated additional information along the way, but there's reams of information that was originally provided to us as part of a draft environmental impact statement. At some point, I think it was 2011, the planning board deemed that information complete enough to go forward with a public review of the document. We've had public hearings, people have commented on the draft environmental impact statement, they've given comments. And at this point, the final environmental impact statement is the document that takes all of the comments on the draft and also, and analyzes those comments, and also brings in any additional information or new information that has occurred since the draft was complete, and any project changes. For example, if the, if the applicant in the town were to decide to do some sort of regional sewer plant, that new information that was not studied in the draft necessarily would be put into this document and discussed. So this, this document sort of handles all of the responses to the public comments and all of the new information that may have occurred after the, the draft was complete.
Maybe this is not the time or the place, but is it possible to request that going forward, we deal with soft copies? I mean, I guess if some people like those four-inch binders, but I find you get two or three of those things, and you're trying to keep your fingers and cross-reference.
Yeah, if we've asked a few times, and the preference is to have so many hard copies if the public were wanting to review, and then I'd submit eight CDs along with each one.
Okay.
And as soon as this becomes a complete document, and hoping that's something we achieve tonight, this can be posted as, as well as what's been posted with the DEIS on our website. We have, the entire DEIS document is hosted on a website. So any questions regarding that document, you can, you can go to the website and it's all there. It's been there since, it went down for a short period, we had a technical issue, but.
So, I'm sorry, again, Michelle, if you can just take us through what the planning board's responsibility is at this point in time and moving forward, just, just kind of give us the overview of the rest of the process.
Sure. So at this point, you have an, a draft FEIS. And what we're looking to do is get, or what the applicant is looking to do is get this document declared complete. And once the board declares it complete, then they would do sort of the final step of the DEIS process, which is they would, they would make findings on the project. And at that point, you, you know, you, you determine whether or not you think that the project can be approved based on whether or not the, the potential impacts of the project have been fully mitigated, okay? So, and you'll go through a finding statement, and you'll say, because we found this, and as part of the Seeker review, we agree to this, or, or we don't agree to this, and, and you put in any, you know, sort of environmental conditions that may be in, on the project into that document.
And then from there, assuming that the board adopts it as complete and has satisfactory findings, we'd actually move into a subdivision review at that point.
Right. And theoretically, you've been doing some of that subdivision review simultaneously, so you wouldn't be like you were starting from scratch, but there might be some very specific details. For instance, you know, the applicant has to work with the highway superintendent about where they're going to place their sewer lines and the roadway. They have to go through maybe floodplain analysis for certain lots that might have portions of their lot within the floodplain. That kind of stuff would, would occur. And we'd look at that, we'd look at setbacks, we'd look at, to make sure that all the, the lots meet all of the zoning requirements and other typical things that you look at with a subdivision. You know, if you're going to have sidewalks in certain locations, whatever it is.
Right. So that's part of why you see in the, in the document itself, as you review it, there isn't necessarily the, the lot-by-lot kind of review, but it's more of the kind of global impact of the project on the surrounding area and on this property itself that we're looking at right now, correct?
Can I just clarify one thing?
Thank you, sure.
I believe, and I'll have our, our attorney and Mr. Wood either agree or disagree, but I believe we opened the public hearing the first time on the subdivision, on the, on the DEIS, all three at, at one time. When the public process for Seeker closes, we haven't closed that public process on the subdivision. The application is in front of you. We would continue that application.
Right.
And then, and then finalize that subdivision, and that would be done. So we did open the public discussion, if you will, on the subdivision.
Thank you. Do we want to jump into the comment letter? Mike, you got another question?
Yeah, I have a question. Mark, and I thank you for using this one, because on some of the drawings, the 44-acre parcel that is to remain with the Turner?
Tucker family.
Tucker family, sorry. Features this, a kind of a sketched-out cul-de-sac. What is that?
The, the request in the DEIS, I'll go back to that document. And just so you know, it's www eastfishkillmontage@, spelled at, at, A-T, eastfishkill.com. You can find that document, and all of the appendices loaded up there. There was a request in the scoping document to analyze that leftover parcel, the 42-acre parcel, if it were to develop as a subdivision. And we were able to sketch 16 lots in there, and there was a whole separate discussion of what 16 lots would, how that would impact the roads, how it would impact sewer, how, and that's in there. So that's the only reason it's there. We're not, we're not under contract to buy it. It'll, it'll remain with the Tucker family.
And there's no current plan to develop it, to your knowledge?
No.
Okay.
Could you just take a quick pause for a second, so Charlene can, she's getting a little hard time here.
Sure. No, you're fine. We do.
No?
No, you're fine.
Thank you.
So.
I'm good.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. What we usually do is I'd let each of our professionals kind of walk through their comments, and we can kind of hit them one by one, and.
It's up to you. I, I mean, I've looked at them, I've had conversations with Mr. Sutaro. I tried to reach Michelle, I wasn't able to get her ahead of time, but I, again, I just got that today. Looked through the entire memo, discussed it with our, our professionals. It's up to you how you want to go through. I can do it summarizing some of these things that I agree could be expanded on and go that route.
Okay, so I think, just understanding that you're looking for what would be needed in order to declare the document complete, or to say, understanding what our common, professionals' comments are, whether you wanted to move forward with a determination of completeness, knowing what those comments are outstanding. We just need to get a sense from you, hopefully this evening, whether there's additional things you'd want to submit to the board, or whether this is the final submission. So that, that will be helpful to us to know what our next step will be as far as what we would schedule out for you. So I think moving through, definitely certainly going through the letters, we can, we can get to that.
We, if you recall, when we had our DEIS, we got to this point, we were very close. We, we had, at that point, I think, three versions of that document. This is four. And this was dealing with the comments from the public hearing.
Right.
We got to a point where counsel agreed that we were at a point where we could accept it conditionally upon the town getting, you know, four more items, and they were satisfied to their satisfaction. We were able, we were able to work through that over the course of three weeks. That was done. And then we, the town accepted that document as complete, we circulated and hosted that document. I'm hoping that we either can determine that this is complete by pointing to the information and where, where it's located, or we can compromise and, you know, do what you just said there. So, I'm looking at Morris Associates, Mr. Sutaro's memo.
This is the April 27th letter?
Yes.
I just want to make sure we're looking at the same thing.
April 27th, 2017. I was able to discuss the memo briefly with Mr. Sutaro, and we ran through the comments. I unfortunately mislabeled his review letter, or the Joe Dennis review letter in our appendix, I'm sorry. And, but it is in there, and it's dated February 11th. And we do have a response on page 122 through 126, that responds to each of those comments.
Pete, have you got a chance to take a look at that, and do you agree?
Yes. It is in there. You know, as Mark said, there was some, there were some things that could have been a little clearer, you know, to get us to pages 122 through 126. But irrespective of that, you know, the information, the information is there. You know, I did say in my letter that there were, I'm just trying to get to it, that there was three of those, three of those prior comments that were addressed, and of course, I'm trying to find it right now, and I'm not.
The first line item in your letter says, prior comments six, eight, and nine have been addressed, however formal responses are required.
There it is, I'm sorry, there it is, right there in, you know, the beginning, yep.
So those are on page 122 and 126, official responses.
Right. So Mark and I had a conversation on Friday. Mark had sent through on Friday a marked-up PDF of our April 27th letter over the weekend. I had sent around an email that acknowledged that. And also, you had, had outlined a couple of things that I think we still need to discuss a little bit. One is, one is item number, number two, which is the new regional wastewater treatment plant. On page 17 of the, of the, of the document, it does talk about that they felt that the impacts of, you know, the regional plant was evaluated in the.
Right.
Summit Woods.
Right.
DEIS, but I don't know, I'm not sure if the impacts of, you know, the regional wastewater treatment plant or just the wastewater treatment plant to service Summit Woods was, you know, evaluated. I don't, I don't like recall if, at the time, it was still proposed to be a regional plant. Mark, maybe you have some information on it?
So I don't recall, have we had an updated submission from Summit Woods recently?
Not yet. I mean, they, they did submit some additional information, but they're, they, at this point, they've got, they're going back and clarifying things in the Seeker record, and also looking potentially to do, they're probably going to do a supplemental to, to study some of the additional information that needs to be studied.
And does that include the combined wastewater treatment plant for both projects?
I don't know, because they've never been in front of this board since I've been here, so I've never actually seen their, their.
Really?
Their now, yeah. No, it's been since 2000, I think, six. No, no, Summit Woods. Never the FEI, never the EIS, yeah.
No, Summit Woods was here, and we were here. Yeah, I, I thought they were here.
But they've never been, we, we've never received a submission of their EIS since 2006.
Just to, okay, so I, we've, we've been discussing that with Mark and, and his other client, who we also have to talk to from time to time with regard to this whole arrangement, okay? Number two, your comment number two, Pete, is on page 112 of our document, we were asked to provide impacts, impacts to Montage Summit Woods sites regarding the sewer infrastructure, regarding the emergency road, you know, things that, if we were to proceed prior to Summit Woods going forward, what kind of impacts are we looking at? Yes, there are impacts to disturbing the area where the road would go. There are some wetland disturbances, all of which would be conditional permits, all of which have been discussed in the DEIS with Summit Woods. And we quantified where there's, you know, a disturbance of nine acres is proposed, or.
So specifically, the wastewater treatment plant?
Pete, exactly. So even further, impacts to the Van Anden Kill and downstream wetlands with regard to our discharge point. That was quantified and discussed in our document.
So, Pete, I'm, I'm sorry, just remember, you've got folks on the board here that haven't seen it.
I understand, but I'm addressing the consultants first.
Just bear with me. So are you saying that in the event that you go first, and Summit is behind you, that you would be constructing a treatment plant on your own property with your own discharge point that would then become obsolete? Or what, what is your plan if Summit doesn't?
The discussion all along was, if we were to proceed, and we've been saying this in testimony, and been discussing this with the board, if we were to proceed before Summit Woods, we have an agreement, a developer's agreement, that allows Charbel to go ahead, get the easements they need, the construction access we need to build the plant, put in the lines to connect our two sites.
So you'd build on the Summit property, even if the Summit site doesn't go forward?
That's correct, if it doesn't. But, you know, as far as we know, and the board now knows.
I understand the intention is to move forward. I'm just trying, again, I'm looking at worst-case scenario. We documented our worst-case scenario. Do we understand what that would look like?
And the site was chosen and preferred by the DEC. They looked at both our original site, which was off in an area over here.
Right.
And the site that was chosen was off of Collar Park Road. That was due to the location and the existing flow in the, in the creek. And that's been discussed with the DEC. There are letters in our document that were sent to the DEC that talk about the combined flow. And then we have a draft speedies permit that allows us to design the project to meet that effluent discharge at that location with both projects. So I think we did address it. We just need to work with the consultants in showing them where I think we've addressed those comments. Because this is the, we've been at that one a few times.
So if you do go first, you're still going to design a plant or to build a plant that's going to meet the needs of both properties?
You can, you can build the plants, as far as I understand it now, in modules as well, too. They can be phased.
But it'll have capacity to be expanded or whatever. I mean, just, again, trying to make sure we understand what the, what the whole picture is. I guess I'll look to Pete, do we have enough information in this document to understand that?
Well, now that Mark, you know, is pointing out some of his information in here, which I think was more in response to a Michelle comment, so, I mean, honestly, that's why I didn't really, you know, get into it, you know, all that much. Some of the information is, you know, in here. I guess, Mark, the thing I would ask is, has anybody happened to look at, you know, the size, size of the plant? I know it's right up against the wetland buffer. I mean, is there any change in potential size footprint of the plant?
It would actually be smaller than what we actually originally proposed, because I think.
Mark, we, we've got to get you up to a mic, I'm sorry, we need to capture your comments.
I, I think at this point, if you remember, the system we were proposing was a, it was a extended aeration. Now we're talking MBR, which would be a much smaller plant. So it'd be a smaller footprint. We're talking about doing directional bore, so there wouldn't be any impacts to the stream. We would be coming right across from that last cul-de-sac, so.
Okay.
And then just for my clarity, because I did, I did see this in the document, I just, I just wasn't 100%. I, I just wasn't 100% certain of what it pertained to. The 9.68 acres is the disturbance on the Summit Woods site that you guys would have to create in order to put the plant there?
Correct.
Okay. And that includes whatever road you'd have to, the temporary road you'd have to build to get to it and maintain it?
That includes the emergency access as well. That number includes all of those things that would occur if we went first.
Yeah, the 9.68 is actually the, this emergency road that would serve Act 52 for our site is our secondary means of egress.
And then I also noticed on a couple of the maps that, and they were in the appendices that there's a couple of lift stations and I think I saw that there were, I actually saw another one later today after I wrote my letter, but I saw that there's actually two sanitary, are there any others? Because they were on insert maps, so I couldn't, it wasn't an overall map, so I could only see two.
There should only be two.
There are only two, okay. And those I had not seen before.
We included those, that's part of the 9.68.
That's part of the 9.68, okay. And then are those in any, it was sort of, it didn't look like they were, but I'm just confirming because I'm not sure that the maps that I saw them on would have had the wetland lines shown on them. Are those lift stations in any of the wetland areas? No.
Oh, absolutely. So if we, if, when we get to an FEIS, it's going to have a little, taking this map, it would have a little color section in it that would show where the wastewater treatment plant is going to be and all of that. We, we have exhibits that show that. We would, and we've. They would be extracted from Summit Woods's designs. They're in here though as well, but they're in here. We included all that. We included those site plans and the area where we're discharging in our document. What I think we need to do, and I, and I agree with, with Mr. Sotaro, is just maybe point to that information a little better, provide a little better narrative in a response, not necessarily revise what's here, but make sure that in his, in, in the comment letter, I can give the information that he needs. It could be a letter from us, it could be included as maybe a supplement appendix if that's what it needs to be, but just make sure that he's comfortable with that. It, it is in here and maybe it's not as clear or easy to find and I agree. You know, we've gone through a few iterations of this, so.
But actually, if I make a suggestion, which I think would be super simple, if, if you could even just do a, you know, a document that just gives a slight narrative of like, okay, this would be the scenario under, if we decide to go it alone, this would be the scenario if we go with Summit Woods, and then just reference the maps because, and I don't, I know, I did see the individual maps that showed the sewer treatment plants, but they were, again, they were like inserts or sections of maps and it would be super helpful to see it on a larger scale of the entire subdivision, like, okay, if you had that map showing where the sewer treatment plant was and where the lift stations were in relation, can you do that pretty easily?
We, we have it, but it's not, you, you're right, I just looked at it, you couldn't see it with, unless I had it blown up to this size. So what I'd have to do. I went through it and I, I'll be honest with you, I missed it. I'm looking at it right now, I can't really, but I see that little spot right down here and it's on a larger scale like this and it shows that. Let's just make a better exhibit so we can all.
You could just like append it to the project description, just say like an additional, and we can just add it into the, into the document.
Good.
I think that would be the easiest way to do it.
I think you can kind of get it.
Because then that way it would just describe the different, and you can show the alternative one would be, I don't know, alternative one maybe, the preferred alternative would be to share and then alternative two would be to do it, go along, but just describe it.
There were three options. One would be to build it on our site and they connect to us. Two would be to go on Collar Mark Road, we connect to them. DEC chose that for the regional plant. Third option is the discussion about a force main and a pump station. Pump station would still go in the same location, it would be less of an impact in terms of disturbance, but there would be a whole route of, routing of the force main and we'd have to discuss where that's going. Again, we've identified all those options in here, so I think I just need to either work through, you know, a direct communication with, with the professionals, but.
So, just bear with me. So Pete, I'm going to just ask again, do you set aside the need for clearer maps knowing that you now know where in the document to find the answers? Are you comfortable that the level of detail is adequate for us to understand what will happen here?
It appears so, yes. I think if it was just more like organized and clearer.
So if montage goes first or if it's shared, we understand what that, what the wastewater treatment plant's going to look like, how it's going to function?
Uh, yes, and I think it's further outlined in the developer's agreement, that's in appendix K, I think it is.
Okay.
And I think, just, just so I can, I think if that happens, that will go a long way to satisfying my, my first comment in my letter, which describes the questions that I had related to the sewer.
I can, I could, let me just, I'll finish addressing Mr. Sotaro's memo and then go through, because I agree with you, Michelle, so number three, the request is that we identify another viable entity should, a transportation corporation that owns the utility corporation defaults. I would defer to Dominic on that one. We've talked about it a few times in the document, but I'll let, at least get that on the record now.
Yeah. From a legal perspective, there's basically three forms of ownership that could apply to wastewater treatment plant at this location. One would be for the developer to build a wastewater treatment plant and then turn it over to the town. And then the town would own it and they would operate it. They would also form a district so that the residents of these projects would pay for the cost of the ownership and, and maintenance of that facility. We understand that the town board is on record of saying that that is something that they would prefer that not happen. That's one option. Another option would be for Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority to maintain and own and maintain the facility. We have not had any extensive discussions with them, but it is something that could happen. The third option, and the option that we're proposing is, is that a transportation corporation be formed, which is a specific corporation authorized under New York state law to run a wastewater treatment corporation. That's all that they do. It doesn't get into any other kinds of business. It's a very specific corporation that would essentially own and operate and maintain the facility and would charge the residents of the projects for, for that. The formation of a transportation corporation requires the consent of the town board and concerns regarding the viability of transportation corporations are valid and as a result, there are standard conditions that are typically applied as to make sure that the facility has adequate financing to do what it says that it's going to do and that there is also bonding in place that in case it doesn't do what it needs to do and the town has to take over the system, that there is money there that, that it provide immediate funds to the town in order for that to happen. That is what we're proposing to do here. The town board can't act on that application until seeker is complete. So we've identified those as being the options and then once seeker is complete, we can appear formally before the town board and make our case and they can make their decision.
So I just want to be clear though, if, are you forming a homeowners association?
Yes.
Okay, so just.
But that's, but that's separate.
Understood. So is it that the homeowners association would pay the transportation corporation or each individual homeowner would have to pay the transportation corporate? I mean, I'm assuming there's some sort of fee that would be involved to maintain it?
Yeah, it's, it's individually.
It's individual, so similar to what the town may do where it becomes part of a town bill, if the town were to take the, the system, you would have a corporation that just bills residents?
Correct.
Okay. What's, is that, I mean, I'm assuming there's standards for enforcement if you're, I mean, you'd have to have collection and all, that, that's a, seems like a lot of effort.
Understood. You know, that's why in, in many cases, the town option is preferred because the town has the power of tax.
That's why I was just surprised, you said the private one was preferred.
No, only because the town has already indicated that they would prefer not to take it.
I understand, okay, all right.
It's not, it's not our preference, but it is our option, you know, so, and in order to move forward.
And the comment about the Dutchess County Wastewater Authority, is that also a viable option or do you view that as not a viable option?
You know, my understanding, quite frankly, about the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, and I may be a little bit out of touch on this, but is, is that they typically would not go into a municipality without the town actually consenting that they be there. But if the town's concern is, is that they don't want to be responsible for the burden of maintaining the facility, the town could say to Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, "We don't want this burden, but since this is what you do for a living, maybe you guys could do it."
Okay.
All those are options that are essentially on the table, but we can't get determinations on those until we've completed the secret process.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So does the FEIS have to be adopted before the town can make a determination?
My understanding is yes, we have to have a completed, accepted complete document.
Do we want to know upfront whether the town's?
I'm sorry, Jason.
Do we want to know upfront what the town wants to do before?
So I guess I had that same question. Are the details of the financing and the bonding something that we should be reviewing now or that's totally in the purview of the town board?
Town board would take care of it at the appropriate time. As counsel said, until the secret process is complete, the town board can't say yea or nay.
Right.
Well, they could say nay, but they can't say yea without a secret process.
Right. And we should be given a fair opportunity to present, you know, what options are viable to them at that time.
Okay. Okay, another question.
I mean, they can say no, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, yes, they can.
After all of this, they could say no.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They could.
They could.
But they would have to have a good reason to do it.
Oh.
Okay. Moving on, with, with regard to that comment, page 123 speaks a little further to some of the information you're looking for. I think we agreed, as well as in the appendix, appendix J, we have a letter from Delaware Engineering that talks about the combined flows, the impacts of the combined flows, you know, are, are here in the document and we have the draft speedies permit issued by the DEC. So I think the information you're looking for in three was addressed either by the document and, and further clarified by Dominic.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to ask one more question, just again, in the, assuming montage goes first and you built the wastewater treatment plant on someone else's property, does that pose any issues for a transportation corporation or anything or is, how?
The developer's agreement that we have executed.
Okay.
Requires that the, either property owner, let's say Summit Woods goes prior to, goes forward before Charbel, we're sharing water and sewer.
Okay.
So the water tank, the water treatment plant is on our site, the wastewater treatment plant is on their site. If they need water, obviously they need the easements, the rights of ways, the locations of their force mains, sorry, water mains to connect to the, to the water tank and the, the wells. Those documents are required as part of that developer's agreement that we supply them with those documents. We've agreed to that in advance of this moving forward. If the reverse were to happen and we go forward, Summit Woods goes after us, we would then get the easements we need to go into the site, get the emergency access was one thing we're going to clarify, but also have the right to have the construction access to build the property and those easements would be granted and in favor of the transportation corporation or the eventual owner.
So you would have the ability as the transportation corporation to continue to maintain off-site from this location?
Correct, you have the right to go on.
Okay.
That's described in the document in a few locations and further described in the actual developer's agreement, which is in the appendix and I think it is K. I think you, you know.
Yeah. So the wastewater treatment plant, you said it could be phased, like when you could build, you know, the first increment and then if Summit Woods were built out, then you could build the second increment. I, I don't recall seeing that phase plan. Is it in there? Because I, and it may well be.
Yeah, no, it's okay. It's a letter that I think we need to refer to when we talk about the microbiological reactor. That's what it means. I don't, I've been thinking about that. That, that change in technology allows the treatment of wastewater to occur on a smaller footprint. We've talked about the aerated system years ago, well, this is the new technology. Those plants can be built and expanded on. So we would build the, you know, the main reactor and then those wells would be expanded on as the new development connects into the project. That's in a Delaware Engineering letter dated February 4th, 2013, and that's in appendix J. Talks about that 2013.
And that can be added without any interruption?
I, I can't speak to that, Mr. Perviva, I'm not an engineer, but from what I understand, it's, it's designed that way.
All right.
What, what they, what they typically do is you have to build the headworks for the plant, you know, where the incoming pipe, you know, the headworks of the plant has to be built right up front to accommodate the total flow. And then it's just after that, as Mark Day just said, you can have different, different, different trains, that'll be for whatever, pick a number, 50,000 gallons a day. So you can, you can add on, you know, the trains afterwards, you know, the treatment parts of the plant, but just the upfront stuff, you know, the plumbing, the plumbing inside, you know, the plant where it's going to, you know, receive the flow, that all has to be built right up front to handle, you know, the total flow, but the treatment components after that can, you know, be phased in.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mark?
Right. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So really, so really just before, just before we move on to number four, the only thing that was part of comment three, and it appears that, what I'm hearing that, you know, it's okay to wait until after the secret process is, is closed, it's just that there was a, a prior comment that had said, "Look, you know, the town doesn't appear to be interested in being the backup entity for the transportation corporation, so maybe you should reach out to county water and wastewater." So as the applicant said, they haven't, you know, done that, but it, but it appears based upon our discussion that that's okay, you know, for now, that that can wait and that could be something that's, you know, decided after the fact, after, you know, the secret process is done. Because there's going to be some, you know, backup like entity for the transportation corporation, you know, there has to be, whether it's the town, the water authority, I guess that stuff that can get flushed out, I would say, later.
No pun intended.
For lack of a better word. I knew that was coming, but I, I didn't have a better, you know, word, so.
Number four is this whole discussion regarding the force main option and that's being evaluated and we did submit a letter in our document. Mr. Kardisco sent a letter, October, let me just get it here.
It was Halloween.
Halloween, it wasn't, October 31st? Yes, October 31st, 2016.
Busy then, weren't you, Tom? You were busy.
It was addressed to Mr. Hickman, town board, planning board. It's regarding the, the option, the third alternative, we asked for some clarification. We're obviously willing to consider that as a viable option. I understand that Mr. Day met with Mr. Bryan a few times and I think will be involved hopefully in that next meeting and, and we'll see where that, that's headed, but we're, we're willing to consider that alternative. I'm not sure what it is we need to address on that one, Pete, regarding your comment number four.
Yeah, you know, I'm not either because I guess that was going to be part of what we were going to discuss as to what level of detail, if any, that, you know, needs, needs to be in here in order to close, you know, the process and like it could be just exactly what, you know, you put in there that, hey, this has been identified late, late last year as a potential like option and we're going to work with, you know, the town on it. Everybody, you know, is satisfied that that's like a good answer. I mean, I'm fine with it.
From what we understand, the, the infrastructure would be within, in some cases, private property, which would need easements and others where it would be within the road, town road, to connect to the existing plant, all of which would need to be permitted, designed, reviewed by the town as a, you know, as a party to this, this project. So I think that's, that's what we're agreeing to accept as an alternative and if that's the direction we're being asked to go in, you know, we're willing to agree to that if we can get some, just clarification to some of the items asked in Dominic's letter and I think we're getting to that point, so.
Yeah. So for our purposes, we've identified it in the final supplemental environmental impact statement as being a town proposed option to con- statement as being a town-proposed option to consider, and we think that at this point, since it's something that's being considered, we've identified it, but we don't need to do any further analysis until that development is, goes forward. Ultimately, it's going to be a town board decision, if I may, because it's a question of whether or not using the Hamlet Sewer Plant will be a decision that's overseen by the town board rather than the planning board.
So Scott, is this a proposal that's on the table for both Montage and Summit, or is it only for Montage?
No, it's for both.
For both?
And as far as your process, your role in it as lead agency, even if the point of discharge changed from a plant to piping it into the town system, all of the impacts right now are the same with respect to the site, so you're analyzing worst-case scenario with the discharges from a standalone plant, et cetera. If, in fact, the plant turned into, I'll just say, a pumping station, that would, there would be no discharge into any stream in that area, and it'd be pumped through a pipe, and that routing of the pipe and the connection would probably have to be subject to a separate secret proceeding, brief secret proceeding about what maybe, and count the route primarily, if there's wetlands or things like that, that to be traversed. So that's, that's kind of the way so, I have to agree that they've acknowledged it as a proposal. I would also say that since the time that the town board submitted a comment about the treatment plant, we learned that DEC is mandating the combined plant, which we were unaware of until recently, so that that's a positive factor, changing the fact that originally there were going to be two plants, and also the fact that the location of the plant for this project is now going to be combined in the back as opposed to the front. I think those are two major pieces of information for the town board to consider when they get to this, the next phase.
And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I'm going to, what I want to say is then, as far as the planning board looking at worst-case scenario, our worst-case scenario is the combined plant on Summit Woods
Discharge and right there on site.
And Summit in Montage goes first.
Right.
And Summit comes in later.
Right.
So it's not that, it's not that we necessarily say that hooking up to the town plant would be less impactful, but it would just be a separate study, it wouldn't be part of what we're doing here?
Correct, but it would be less impactful from your point of view because
For this property.
Because your, this property, your discharge into the stream, in my opinion, would be the, the big impact.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're assuming, I mean, it's fair to assume that the, the Hamlet plant has the capacity, which is why we're considering this option, and it's, it's already a permitted existing plant, so we would just be providing additional wastewater flows to an existing plant.
So, just help me think through this. So this is another option that needs to be kind of explained in the decision tree.
Well, it is. I mean, their letter, I think, to the town opens the door and is kind of explained to you what another possibility is.
But given that, supposing one scenario, you proceed and you decide, you know what, we're going to build our own, and you do.
Right.
And then along comes Summit Woods, and they say, they have the option, they could go.
No, they can't, because DEC said they'll only permit one plant.
It is combined.
They mandated it.
And the town board would have to approve it.
In theory, they could.
So that was the point I was, was when you said it is a combined plant.
It's DEC, as the regulatory agency said, we want you to marry your two plants, and then the town board is the never, next level is that they would, or whatever other authority one might think could consent, would have to give their consent to the formation of the company. So there's several layers.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Comment number five, I would agree, we talked about this prior to coming in tonight, the developer's agreement, and it's actually appendix I, I was wrong when I said K. It talks about the terms of our agreement and providing the access, it actually talks about construction access, transfer of easements, goes through everything that you'd want to know about our agreement. What I think we do is a one-page addendum to that agreement.
Which is not in here.
Which is not in here. I mean, it doesn't specifically say emergency access, but it says access, so let's clarify it with a document. We'll, we'll execute that with, with Summit Woods.
But it wouldn't be temporary access, it would be intended to be permanent.
It would be a permanent access until that road develops, until Summit, it's in the same location as their future road would be. It'll be specific to that, it'll have a
I just didn't see that, so.
No, I agree with you. And it was, it is appendix I. All right, so I, I agree that we can do that. Number six, I'm sorry if, in fact, we missed something, but I don't believe we have, this talks about our letter of map revision we were working on with our consultant, Alton Knapp, Jr. I talked to him, and he did say that he spoke with, and I don't know that it was the floodplain administrator, but someone in town retired recently, I don't know who that was. Whoever that was, was the guy we were working with prior to our letter of map revision. When we got through the process with, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bryan, I don't know if all this is 100%, he's going to pull his notes out and find out who we talked to. We then had to do a public notice, town gets a notice, we all get notified, and then the document becomes, you know, the letter of map revision becomes the revision we rely on. I believe we've done everything we were supposed to do. I don't know that every step of the way, there was contact with the town, but as Mr. Sotaro mentioned, it's kind of a moot point, because the, the science behind what we needed to do allowed us to, you know, modify the map based on what we had relied on originally. We haven't really changed any hydrology, obviously, we didn't change the hydrology, it is what it is. So if you need more, I'm trying to see where.
So the, the BFE was changed for the entire site, or a portion of the site?
The mapping was revised. I don't believe the base flood changed. And it was just for a portion of the wetland, from what I understand.
It says to revise the base flood elevation and the corresponding limit.
Right. It's within the wetland, from what I understand, it's always been within our, our wetland limits. The floodplain has always been within the wetlands. Can't develop within the wetlands anyway, so there were no impacts on our homes.
Maybe this is a silly question, so why, why did you do it?
Because the, I'm sorry, floodplain, remember, it was modified, and it had taken up a larger area than, than we had on our original application, so would you have asked that we revisited, and that's when we brought in help.
Okay. So then the actual delimit, the limitation of the floodplain was moved back into the wetlands?
Correct.
I understand. Okay. Thank you.
So we have discussion of that whole process on page 124 of the document, and if you're looking for that, I would go there first, and then all of the appendix, appendices that are related to that are referenced there. And number seven, I think, is a new comment, but
Yes, yes, that's true, it is a new comment, yes.
But I, I think we can address it, right? We talked about the impacts of our wetland crossings. I actually have sections in here, and our environmental consultant, Mr. Nowicki, has done an extensive analysis of those and is working with the DEC, so I think all of that information is in there. Is there something you want maybe to clarify?
I think it was referenced wrong, so that, like, I think it was, if appendix D had the wellness, and maybe, because originally it said C, one to C2, and I think it was D, so maybe that, maybe he just missed it.
Okay, what I think is happening there, there are conservation easements in C, D are the maps, so maybe I can just add a letter, if, if the reference was wrong, I'll, I'll double-check the reference. These wetland crossings.
Yeah, I mean, if we're
I got confused too, when I was looking through in that section.
Yeah, I mean, you know, if we're going to, if it's decided that we're just going to do a, a letter and maybe add another appendix to, you know, the document that, you know, would go through there, you know, I'm fine with that. I mean, if, if the information is in there, you know, sometimes it's a little difficult, you know, to find it, but, you know, if it's in there and you can go pull it out and show us like where it is, you know, I can find with that.
To, to us, lay a minute, are these wetland crossings what we call bridges?
I couldn't hear, I'm sorry.
Are these bridges?
Yeah, bridge crossings.
That's what we would call bridges.
We're talking about habitat crossings as well, these are box culverts, so the, they're not fragmented, we've met with the DEC.
I'm looking, I, I mean, I don't recall seeing any place where something crossed that was not an elevated bridge structure. Okay, thank you. No, that was it. Mark nodded, that's all I needed.
Okay. I think that really
So before we move off of Pete, your letter, is there anything here that we haven't talked about yet, or anything else that you would want to see in or with this document?
No, I think, you know, we covered it, like, again, I was just going basically by our last letter, which was February 11th, because everything, you know, prior to that had already been addressed, so, you know, I wasn't going to go back in time and look at, you know, anything else, we were just looking from February 11th, 2016 on. So I think, I think based upon what we discussed, I think we've covered it.
Okay. Do you need to be, did you have a chance to review the, for number seven, for the construction phasing? I'm sorry, am I paraphrasing without looking at?
No, I think that's what we just, you know, discussed that, Mark was going to do like a letter, like a addendum or whatever that we want to call it, and, you know, will outline if he, if he says where, where this information is, you know, he'll point it out in, you know, the document, and, you know, reiterate it in his letter.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mark? Is that all right?
Yes, I think, I think you're, we owe a narrative to explain appendix D, it's in several sections, as you said, it's not always easy to find, so I think a, a letter response to both memos, I think, with references back to this existing document.
Okay.
And then maybe an additional appendix then becomes one more piece of this pie, if you will.
Okay.
Then I think we're where we need to be.
All right, so in addition to the letter that's going to provide better, specific references for where to find information in the document, you also were going to provide the map of what, of the connection with Summit, in the event that you go first?
We're going to point, we're going to enlarge the map.
In a larger frame, so we can actually see the detail.
Make it more clear, so you can see each of the lift stations, I agree.
Okay, and that'll include the, both the wastewater treatment plant and any additional access, as well as the emergency, emergency access.
Location, yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. We have the April 28th, 2017 memo from the township planner, town planner, Robin. We've kind of discussed some of these comments, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the first one, we, if you clarify with the addendum that you're going to do, I think that will go a long way to addressing all of
One-page addendum with the access for emergency, okay, I agree, that's what I wrote there too. You talked about shared services, what does that mean? It's, in the document, it talks about infrastructure that we need to share, force main, water mains that connect water to their site, that's really what it talks about, so. That's that.
Michelle, with that explanation, do we have sufficient information in the document?
I, I think we will, I just haven't seen it all on the plate, because
That's fair.
Some of the information that was provided, I wasn't sure exactly what it was referencing, so I think if, I got some clarity tonight, but I think if it's all laid out, it'll be easier for me to follow exactly which impacts are related to which scenario, and then I think the information will be, okay.
It's easier, it's almost going to summarize where to go in this document to find things, it may even send you back to the website, and, but let's try to keep it simple. Moving on to your past review letter, February 16th, 2016, our response to that starts on page 33, under comment 12. There's an issue regarding emergency access, again, so I wanted to just bring that to the board's attention, and I'm sorry, February 16th, 2016, I wanted to go to page 104.
So, I'm sorry, you're on, you're on the top of page two.
Yeah, what I, what I did there was page three.
Michelle's letter that starts with the response on page 104 does not adequately address or describe the disturbances.
Right.
Okay.
Those two were the, those are my comments from my previous letters, and the underline is my new comments related to those comments.
But this, this comment still stood as of tonight.
Yes, because I couldn't, I couldn't follow, so I think if he clarifies what he said he was going to clarify, and I just got some information that explained the disturbance that he showed were related to the Summit Woods.
That's the nine-point, something, okay.
Yes, page 112.
And I, I think that should address it, but I, I'd have to see it all in kind of one place to understand that.
What I'm trying to
We need, bear with me, do, I'm sorry, bear with me. Do we need an additional map on the summit side that shows limits of disturbance and things like that, not just the placement of where the roads are going to be, or is there something else you need to be able to understand?
I think what we need is an overall map that shows all of the disturbance that's going to be related to this project, so if they're disturbing off-site, that disturbance has to be shown, and I think he does show in sets of those maps.
Yeah.
But it's not one big map that kind of shows, and that would be super helpful if we had that.
So you're going to do the larger map anyway that was going to show items on the summit site, can we make sure that also includes limits of disturbance?
I'm going to need to submit a large-scale version of it.
That's fine.
You can't see it. I do have a map in here, you can't see.
We would appreciate that, no, it's helpful to us to have the bigger map, I think, sometimes.
Unless you're looking at it electronically, you can zoom in, obviously, but, Mr. Bryan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, that was my request earlier, it's kind of that, a map like that that shows in color.
Completely understand that.
Included, not included.
Yeah.
What I was trying to get at, Michelle, is if there was anything else you wanted to see on the larger map that was going to be submitted, or if there's two different versions or layers that you need.
Just make sure that the, like, lift station locations, the wastewater treatment plant, and where The lift station locations, the wastewater treatment plant, and then I'm assuming, I don't know if this is true, that the force main infrastructure is going to go in the roadways?
Everything's in the right way.
So, so if you could just clarify that, on the, like, you know, just show a note on the map or whatever it is that just states that, so that, that's addressed, so we don't have to be concerned that there could be pipes put in wetlands somewhere, or whatever it is, okay.
And does that take us down to the number one new comment at the bottom of page two?
That takes us down to, I would say, two.
Third, yeah, while you're, yes, you're still, we're still in the middle of your review letter, February 16th, regarding paragraph, the third paragraph on page 15, I think you mean page 17, and I was going to clarify what we did there. Go to your, page two.
Yep.
Fourth paragraph down.
That was, that was the old, referencing the old
Okay, so I'm not addressing that?
You don't have to address that.
Okay.
No, the underlined, the part that's underlined is
Okay, I got you.
Those were just old comments that kind of pulled forward.
So the page differences are off, but the comment will be addressed by the things we've already talked about.
Should be addressed by the new information that he's going to provide.
So the new comment, number one new comment at the bottom of page two?
It's regarding the submission for Summit Woods. We talked about what we need to do if we move forward. From what I understand, as you know, Mr. Day works with Summit Woods, and they're in the process of putting together what they need to put together, come back, but we're working as well with them to get the information we need. We'll have that in here, and we'll provide that to your professionals.
And again, our I is to, our worst-case scenario is that you move forward and they don't, we need to know that you've got everything in place that you need to build on their site, so it sounds like you do, we just want to make sure we've got the I's dotted here. Michelle, is there anything from this comment that we haven't covered yet?
I believe so, I think we can go on to the next one. And the next one's just sort of a confirmation that they addressed the comment about, I had, the previous comment was that I wanted to know how much it would cost to maintain the bridges, and they provided an estimate of approximately $23,000.
So I'm sorry, I'm, I'm seeing, we skipped over the review letter 412 and 216 about the detail of the bridge crossings?
Right, and they provided that.
You're comfortable that that's there, okay, so that's okay.
Absolutely, yep, they provided that, and so ultimately, the, the response was that it would be about $23,000 to maintain, annual cost, right, to maintain the bridges. And then the question I just, for clarity, was when the projected tax revenue was $98,000, is that minus the $30,000, or does that, or is that $30,000 come out of that $98,000?
I'd love, we analyze it, it would come out.
So it would be, after you subtracted the road funds, it would be $68,000, okay.
I, I have a question, I mean, so what would these bridges cost to build?
Construction cost?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, I, I can, I mean, we got to understand the width of the road, their concrete spans.
Now, we did this before.
Yeah, so where I'm going, and, and tell me if this is an important question, but, you know, okay, these assets are
I'm, I'm sorry, we've got a few different people talking, I want to make sure we have one person talking, so.
So, so these assets, there's three of these assets that are going to be built, and then is that going to generate such, I, I understand the idea of annual maintenance, but what happens if they, one of them has to be replaced?
Well, there, there's a discussion about, I can't remember what you called.
There's a discussion in there on the course of, and we'll, hold on, items in it.
Right, so he, so he talks about the annual maintenance, and then there's also a discussion a discussion about putting in, and I think it was about $23,000 into, and I can't remember what you referred to it as, like a fund.
A sinking fund.
A sinking fund.
A sinking fund, okay. That was, okay. But, that's where, I, I remember seeing that, too. I didn't know whether, how that, the $23,000 differed from the $22,000. I mean, is that, so that, that 23 is in addition to the 22,000?
No, no, no.
That's just a rounded one.
It's rounded to 23.
And that's actually coming in as tax revenue. That, that is part of the 98, and that basically then you're proposing would go advise the town to put that into a sinking fund in the event that they ever had to replace those bridges. So, I, I, I'm just curious, I mean, to the unwashed, what's the life expectancy of a bridge, and what is the cost? And is that going to be something that we just kick down the road to whoever, when the, when a bridge has to be replaced?
The manufacturer's state, it's got a 50-year service life.
50-year service life, okay.
Page 125, just so we have a clear understanding, through 127, addresses Mr. Fitzgerald's original letter that asked for all the information regarding the bridge, the cost of the bridge, to maintain the bridges. That's where you're going to find the information you're.
You know, I read that, and it, that I struggled with understanding what it was telling.
Okay.
So, maybe that's, I'll take that up with.
I mean, the, the idea is that with this type of maintenance, I didn't hear that it was a 50-year shelf life when it was done. That's, that's if you were to neglect doing these things. These things preserve the life of these, um, concrete spans and the things that are associated with the bridges, so they last a lot longer. Otherwise, you are dealing with a problem, like you're saying. That's why we have the, this program in here, and that's why we recommend, you know, the sinking fund. And that's how we address the comment in the HVEA letter, which is, which is, talks more about bridge maintenance.
Okay.
And just so it's, so you understand, I, from my clarity, I asked, right now, the projected tax revenue is $98,816 to the general fund. That has to be, about $23,000 would have to be subtracted from that for the bridge maintenance. It probably, I would say, about $30,000 total for the, all the roadway maintenance, because there's going to be snow plowing and other things involved. And I don't know exactly how much that is. Um, I did speak with Bill McClellan, and we're going to try to get an understanding of what that number is, but I have to work with him, um, on that.
Okay, and then.
So, there's an assumption that even though there'll be a homeowners' association, that the roads would be dedicated to the town?
Correct. And maintained by the town.
Okay.
And the 98,8 is basically, you know, it says to the general fund. That is the total town tax generated by the 122 homes?
So, it's really the general fund plus the highway fund.
Okay.
So, when you take 98,8, subtract the 23 and the 30, you've only got $45,000 left from this development to cover all other services, whether it's recreation, police, et cetera.
All the, all the, all the services have to come out of that.
Of the remaining 45,000.
That's why I bring my attorney to these meetings.
The 30,000, we don't, I don't know exactly how much the roadway maintenance is. The bridge maintenance is 23. And then I said the total, I'm guessing maybe another, I'm bad at this, but I'm guessing maybe another $8,000 or $7,000 for plowing or whatever for the, the road. So, I'm saying.
Oh, the 30 is to 23 plus 7.
Correct.
Oh, I thought it was incremental, the way it was written.
But I don't know, I don't know, I don't have that number yet, so.
Give or take. Okay. So, from that point of view, there'll be approximately 65,000 to 70,000 left for general town services.
After the highway.
Okay, that's, that's a better number. Thanks.
And, and by the way, does.
General services, you still have road maintenance, though.
Right, and I don't.
So, the plowing, salt, that kind of stuff.
Correct. And I don't know how much exactly. I tried to get that number from Bill, and we're going to work on that number together.
Okay.
And so.
Yes.
Just the record, Bill is the highway superintendent.
So, the, uh, the, the, is there like a, a special type of maintenance that has to be done on bridges?
And he, and that protocol is described in the, he includes that.
Right, so.
And that, and that cost is $23,000.
Page 114 has a whole discussion of the maintenance.
Right. So, I guess that's what I'm confused about, the sunk fund, the sinking fund that. But, yeah, we can see a breakout on that.
There's, there's more to that, page 121. It's got to be, we got to look at that, because we're not looking at everything that it's talking about.
Okay.
I think the sinking fund was, and your response, if, you correct me if I'm wrong, was for things that might occur outside of routine maintenance. So, the sinking fund would be created to handle expenses outside of the routine maintenance. The $23,000 handles this, the suggested routine maintenance of, of the three bridges from, that's like a DOT protocol.
Right.
And then outside of that, they're suggesting a sinking fund to handle any other issues that might arise related to the bridges.
Also coming out of the 98,8.
I guess that would have to.
Did you talk to Bill at all about performing the maintenance?
Let me, let me, let me read this.
I did not, no.
Paragraph.
Okay.
So, it's in the record. Page 121. With regard to the long-term maintenance of the bridge culvert structures, the applicant, montage of East Fishkill, will implement a one-time contribution of, and it doesn't have a figure, okay, there's a typo there, at the time of turnover of the roadways to the town to implement a sinking fund to be used solely for the non-routine maintenance of these structures by either the town or homeowners' association. It would be the town for the main loop road, that's a town road, master plan road. This funding will be in addition to the anticipated surplus roadway maintenance funding. This, I'm sorry, this funding will be in addition to the anticipated surplus roadway maintenance funding generated by the project. There's a missing figure there. It was supposed to be an $80,000 contribution that would be generated and turned over.
What, what specifically, this non, non-routine maintenance, what, what, what?
What's the question? I'm sorry.
You said non-routine, this, the, the funding will be for non-routine maintenance? What constitutes non-routine maintenance?
It should say routine maintenance. Again, that's.
It does say non.
Yes.
Yeah, it should be routine.
Yeah, this, I, let's just clarify.
We just need you to come up to the mic.
That was for replacement. I think that's, sinking fund was for replacement.
There are two, there are two items here. Um, I don't know if you need me to identify myself or not.
Yes, please, for.
Tom Troy, President, Charbel Development Corporation.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. Um, and I want to commend everybody for the way that this thing is moving, by the way, after however many years. I really appreciate the opportunity to get into this level of detail. So, thank you very much. With regard to the bridges, we spent a tremendous amount of time, not only looking at the design parameters, but coming up with something that we felt was efficient and reasonably economical, and also relatively easy to maintain. The intent was that there would be two, uh, two pots of money, if you will. One is the $23,000, 22,9, which we believe adequately covers routine maintenance, whether it's annual inspections, nominal repairs that happen over, over time, to, to things that happen typically in any roadbed, these having to deal with those that go over the stream. Non-routine maintenance may be if there is a flood, and that flood deposits excess siltation around the base of these bridges. Mind you, these bridges contain wetland crossings or go over wetlands. The intent of that fund was to be utilized for non-routine maintenance. Um, we came up with some numbers. We thought that a fair number was, on day one, when we're turning those, that road over, inclusive of those bridges to East Fishkill, that we write you a check for $80,000. You then retain that money and put it into a special fund for the sole purpose of making those.
Non-routine.
Infrequent, non, non-recurring, but infrequent, uh, for lack of a better term, capital improvements to the maintenance of those bridges.
Okay.
I, I absolutely believe that they will last more than 50 years. The Romans have bridges that were built 2,000 years ago. Now, it doesn't snow as much.
Better.
There, but again, we're, we're not anticipating that these bridges just fall down after 50 years. They're there. Yes, they need maintenance, but they'll certainly be there for quite some time, if properly maintained.
So, that, if, so assuming the 50-year number, not, but, that would come out to be roughly a million and a half total for, at $30,000 a year, blah, blah, blah. So, i- is the cost of these bridges about $500,000 apiece?
No. The cost of the bridges, uh, the capital cost of these bridges, uh, exclusive of the road paving that would go over them, is somewhere around $175,000 apiece. These are precast concrete, uh, sections that are brought in and popped into place with a crane. The, the biggest expense in constructing these is at the, the end walls at either side of the crossing. That's where the head walls go, and that's where you have to bulkhead, let the water come through, get your concrete in the ground where the foundations are, and that, where the end walls are. The pieces go together, for lack of a better term, almost like a big Lego set. You know, you pick them up and you put them in place. Um, but once they're there, they have, they have integrity. They're designed and, and are, and are relatively stable.
So, so 500K apiece would more than cover these bridges?
Again, I think we're mixing apples and oranges, though. The, the, the 30 a year is the money that you're going to spend every year.
Just to maintain them.
To maintain that road. I don't think that has a 50-year expiration date on it. If that road la, if the bridges last 100 years, you're going to maintain it for 100 years at whatever the current value of that.
The 30 a year includes your, your inspection, your preventative maintenance, your long-term maintenance.
That goes on in perpetuity.
And that's, that's a, that's a annual expense, you're anticipating.
The 80,000 is intended to be. I'm new to taking over bridges. This is the first proposal that I've ever sat through and said, we're giving you a bridge.
No, they're great questions, and I'm, you know, I'm trying to give you good answers.
I appreciate the answers.
Thank you. The, the 80,000 is the other pot that is intended to be kept somewhere where perhaps you're earning a nominal return. Nobody makes any interest today in any of that stuff, but at some point, we all will. And that becomes the money that gets utilized in, to the extent you have to make non-routine repairs on those bridges.
Such as repair to damage, uh, or.
You know, if a truck drives off the bridge and you don't have insurance coverage for.
But that's up to the town to maintain or manage that fund, yeah.
And that's just a one-time payment?
Right.
But it sounds like.
But the 23,000 is every year?
I think what they're saying, the 23 would be part of the tax revenue collected from the residents.
They're just calling out that of the tax revenues received, you're going to need 23,000.
For a comparable subdivision that doesn't have these bridges, you're still generating that tax.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
So, you know, where do those dollars go? Do those to maintain the roads? And I don't know about any surplus at the end of the day. And maybe we could have your counsel provide an opinion as to how the town is authorized to have a sinking fund just for certain bridges in a development. You can enlighten me.
But, I mean, are we just, are we taxing that, tacking on that extra money to their taxes?
I'm not hearing there's anything extra.
There's no special.
No special district.
There's no special, it's just out of their normal taxes, we should, could expect $23,000 a year to be.
Right.
To be needed.
So, essentially, the roadway for this subdivision is unusual. Um, you, you said there was something missing. I apologize. The paragraph you read where there was some words that needed to be updated, and there was a missing dollar for you. What page was that on?
Page 121.
121, okay. And so, you would revise that, and.
Yeah, and the missing contribution of $80,000 at the time of turnover. The 80,000 was missing.
Is the whole paragraph missing?
There was a wording that was also on.
I read the whole paragraph, the.
Have a fun.
The contribution number was missing. It was in the track change version.
I marked it on my.
You got it, okay.
I'll fix it.
That's fine.
We're just conditioned, because, you know, in, in the past, every time somebody has said, "We've got a bridge for you," it's never been in a positive, constructive way.
Scott.
So.
I have a question.
Scott?
Yes.
Is that $80,000 sufficient? I mean, they came up with a number, but how do we know that number is the right number?
We don't at this point.
Is that something that we can review and negotiable?
I think if we could get their basis, that would be a starting point, to see how they arrived at it.
Okay.
I, I want to go back and look at the numbers, yeah, because I, I didn't understand when I read it. So, thank you for the additional explanation.
At least understand it now.
I would just like to say, as far as this maintenance, I think we have to discuss with the highway superintendent whether he's willing to take this on, because it is quite a bit of work, and whether he's got to hire more employees, or, you know, what are we getting ourselves into when we agree to take on this maintenance? Because this is not the type of maintenance that highway does.
Normally does.
Normally does.
Okay.
We have enough maintenance to do in the town.
Is there a requirement that this road has to be taken by the town?
No.
That road is shown as a master plan road? Just from what I understood, from the very beginning, from this intersection out to that intersection, it was always discussed that that connection from our montage through Summit Woods, Mr. Bryant, correct me if I'm wrong, was a master plan road in the master plan. So, the idea was that that, you know, ability to get through the job.
14 years ago.
As a long, yeah. We're talking about a master plan that was when we started the processes of senior housing development.
Right, right. Because, again, that may resolve the issue if it becomes something for the homeowners' association to deal with versus the town. I don't know if that's even feasible, but, okay. Okay.
Sorry. Are we on comment?
Three.
Three, okay, good.
But I think we already sort of addressed that as well, because that was like part of Pete's comments. It's not emergency access.
That's from Pete's comment, the seven, right?
Right, right. All right, so.
Oh, and five, five, okay.
So, now four.
Four. Uh, there was a plan, and I, I went back to find it just to make sure. It was just a plan that was generated, uh, for a response to the DEC, for Division of Water Quality Applications. It, it reflected a different date, because I guess the plot date was different. But there's no change to the plan. It's 122 lots. All of the wetland crossings are the same.
Can you just provide us a copy of it?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
A copy of what? I'm sorry, Michelle.
The plan that, that's dated eight, um, 6/15, just so we have it for our.
August 6th, 2015. It was referenced in a review letter.
Oh, is this the one that said, that said it was submitted as part of the prior approval, but the prior approval was in 2011?
Right. So, it sounds like he may have just updated the date and not the plan.
Are we sure?
No, I'm positive.
He's going to, he's going to give us a copy of it. So, I'll check.
You said prior approval. I don't know what you mean.
It, it, the way it was written in the, um, in the response was that the DEC letter referenced this eight, eight, six, 15 plan.
The DEC prior approval.
Yeah.
The review letter, not approval letter. Okay, gotcha. Yep.
So, just, if you give us a copy, I think that'll clarify it.
No problem. I was just clarifying that there were no changes to that plan based on the plan you're reviewing in the FPIS. Okay, comment number five.
And I think comment number five, if we, if you could just, I saw that there were wetland mitigation maps in Appendix D, um, but I just need a better, kind of an overview of the wetland mitigation, because it's all parsed into the separate maps. If you could just say, like, this is how many acres are going to be disturbed, this is how many we're mitigating, and these are the locations of the mitigation that would be.
There's a discussion of that in the Habitat Management Plan and, and some of our impacts. I'll pull that or refer to that section. But it's in here already, and I think we should use the same language.
That's fine.
Yep. Okay, number six, Appendix J.
This just goes to the new, because that was the new information in the F, F, SEIS that came in in 2016, that law must stuff. So, I just said the floodplain.
And we just talked about that prior. Okay, and number seven, it should be noted that before proposing any work within the town right of way, et cetera, the applicant must contact, coordinate with the town highway superintendent, obviously, yes. Okay. Um, your floodplain administrator is?
Scott.
Scott, okay, great. Well, that's it.
So, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Michelle, did we cover the comment between four and five from a previous letter?
Yes. That's the one about the, um, wetlands, and they're going to just reference the plans and kind of do a little summary for me of the wetland stuff.
And as I. And as I-
So this, but, I'm sorry, which plan? Because we talked about having a, a large map that's going to include the summit impacts. Is this the same map, or is this a different map? This is different. This is a map of all the, it's basically the wetland mitigation from what my understanding of the maps are, all around the culverts, right? So, the, the DEC, I'm assuming, is requiring mitigation for the disturbance to the wetlands around all the culvert. But if we could just, if you could just take out and say, like, this is disturbance, this is required by DEC, and reference whatever letter, just to kind of give a summary of that, that would be helpful. And then, and then you can just reference the figures in that, so I know where to look. So you're asking for a narrative, not a new map? Well, they've got maps in there, but then- Because I'm trying to keep track of what exactly we're asking for that will be different from what's already in the document you've given us. Do you have a map that shows the entire wetland mitigation on one map?
In, come on, I gotta answer. Can I answer? Thank you. In Appendix D is our wetland mitigation plan. It has sheets one through 11. The plan that you're referring to, the very last sheet there, one of one, shows everything. Very small scale. It's hard to see. Okay?
So this shows all of the wetland areas on this map? Okay.
And that's very similar, if not the same map, with a different date to the one referred to in that comment from the DEC. So what I'd like to do is just, I'm, I'm clarifying that now and testifying that that's the case. They haven't changed. What we'll do is two things. We'll provide, first, the other map we're talking about, which is a combined map-
Right.
-showing both projects, the location, which we already have, and we're going to show it on a larger scale so you can actually see it, identifying the location of the regional wastewater treatment plant-
Okay.
The proposed location of each lift station, the proposed location of the emergency access road, and the connection points, the water mains, the sewer mains, everything that has to connect if we were to go forward without Summit Woods moving at the same timeframe. The plan that we have in here is not legible, and I don't want to try to get you to look at that. So, that's one map. The second map is what we're talking about now. It's very similar to the last map in Appendix D, but again, I'll enlarge that to a scale that you can, you know, clearly read, and we'll include that along with our response narrative that we're sending back, so that that could possibly be just one more appendix, and then it could kind of address all the things that we just talked about tonight in one location.
That's the map that will come with the narrative that Michelle is asking for as far as limits of disturbance, and you said something else that I missed.
Well, that's in, again, remember that limits of disturbance discussion? It's in the document already. We believe that we've addressed those things, and what we're going to do is respond to these letters and point to where that's located and provide-
I think that may be, I mean, I don't know if this, this might be easier. If you just, in the very beginning of the document, just in the project summary, just say, "summary of sewer and include thing," and then just reference the maps, and then "summary of wetland mitigation," I reference the maps. And then you don't have to bother renumbering, you can just stick it in with the project summary. That might be the easiest way to do it. Okay. And then it'll be upfront in the document and easy to find. Okay. If, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely fine with us.
Michelle, it sounds like with those few additional pieces of information and the clarifying narrative, is there anything else that we need in this document in order to consider it complete, from your perspective? Okay. Yes, and then we still have a traffic comment letter to go through. Go ahead.
No, Brad, I'll see the traffic first.
Is the traffic letter?
I don't have a traffic letter.
He doesn't have a traffic letter yet. But, um, a lot of, if not the majority of my comments have been addressed, the access, the secondary access, and the, um-
Well, wait a minute, let's just make sure the applicant has a copy of the letter. If that's, do you have an extra copy there, or, okay. So, I apologize, you're seeing this tonight.
I don't even have it, do I?
No, it hasn't been circulated.
It hasn't been circulated yet.
Still a draft.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Okay.
So, the original comment was regarding the provision of secondary access. I believe we've, we've discussed that.
So I think we've covered that tonight. Okay.
And, uh, second one was, um, a plan of action in the event that one of the bridges was closed, or, for whatever reason.
We talked about-
I believe you responded by saying that, in essence, that people will be able to get out if one bridge was closed. It, it would be nice, and I don't know if it, it needs to be in this document, but at some point, there should be a plan, an evacuation plan, with some graphical representation of this bridge closed, here's the detour.
I mean, that would be something that the homeowners' association would send out to residents. They would know if a tree were to fall down on the first crossing, there's an emergency access.
Right, here's the alternate road to get out. And again, I don't, I don't, I don't know that it necessarily has to be included here, but at least some reference that it will, it will be forthcoming, an evacuation plan.
Is there any, is there any standard for what we, I mean, just assume some sort of weather, major weather event. What, what if both bridges were out of commission? Are we, we're stranding a certain number of households, right, between the two?
At some, at, at some point, typically at some point, you know, you have to, I guess, consider reasonable action. You know, okay, it's reasonable to expect or anticipate one bridge to be closed, but two bridges, well, you know, you can't, you can't design for everything, you know, for, for, for every eventuality.
That's what I'm asking. Is there, is there something where you have two bridges or three bridges, in this case, in fairly close proximity to each other, the same weather event may affect more than one of them?
I see what you're saying.
I mean, we've had tornadoes, and I, I don't think we will have one. I'm just saying, we've had them in this area. So, do we need to say there needs, and, and again, there needs to be some sort of emergency-
Couple of rowboats.
Helicopter landing spot or something like that? I don't know.
We talked about this years ago.
Yeah, I know, I know. I'm still asking the same question, because I'm not sure what the right answer is.
I don't know if there's any formula that you plug in and say, "This is the amount." I, I think it comes down to engineering judgment, or what you anticipate, what is reasonable to anticipate. Um, one bridge out, as I said, seems to me to be reasonable. Two bridges-
But, but is it, is it as simple as saying the roadway is X number of feet wide, and in a serious emergency, if both bridges or all three bridges were out, you could land a helicopter somewhere on the roadway? Is, I mean, is that, is it that simple, or is there something else you have to plan for if you really can't get in?
Again, I don't know of any, any documentation that would cover an event like that, to say, you know, I, I could look.
This is just an unusual layout, right, with so many bridges very close together on the same roadway, so-
I agree, I agree. Um, I'm sorry, I don't have, I don't, I don't have an answer for you at this time. It might be based on population, or-
I'm, I'm sure we'll find a way to get to people, and I just didn't know if we need to have something like that written in this document.
Again, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I don't.
Michelle, do we have an opinion on that? Is it not necessary? Assuming one bridge is out, as opposed to? I mean, I, I guess my response would be to talk to the emergency responders in the town and see how they would handle an emergency, and see if they can give you an answer that would make you feel comfortable about how, in the event of an emergency, they would handle things in that location. Maybe it's worth having a discussion. Okay.
But I mean, we don't have that for any other housing development, do we?
We don't have any other housing development that's going to be stranded if two bridges go out. The Carol Avenue, is Carol Avenue Bridge, or Carol, Carol Drive Bridge?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And that was out for a while, and that stranded folks, I don't know for how long. Do you know, for how long? Couple days. I thought you got out through the railway. I don't mean you personally, I mean, I thought-
That's an instant, an instance where there was no alternative. In this instance, there is an alternative.
Okay. All right.
The other.
Sure. We'll just pause for one second, will we?
Okay, if anybody has anything they don't wish to be quoted on, now is the time. Can we just, I just had a couple more questions if we could. Are you, or would you really-
We're just need to give her a moment, she's changing the paper.
I just asked, sir, you said yes.
Can I just ask one question? Have we, have we come to a disposition with regard to the contingency plans if more than one bridge fails? Because the question, I, I mean, there are other projects that I'm aware of in East Fishkill that have one bridge, and that's the only way in and out. And I don't know what-
What we were just discussing, that the one we know is Covet Bridge, and there are two emergency access easements, one out to Tom's Way, and the other one out to the road by the Teconic. And they're recorded easements, and there's a gated area, the surface has been put in, and they don't require anyone to go over another bridge, so that that whole development-
How about Teconic Estates?
Which one?
Teconic Estates.
Oh, Teconic Estates is actually, there's supposed to be an easement through the trailer park in the back, and that actually is the poster child for Fayah Bridges, because it's just cost the town this year $100,000.
No, no.
Not much, less, 20, 25,000. And that bridge is nowhere near 50 years, and it's starting to peel and, and structurally, the high risk of going to go and fix it. So, there's, there's two examples.
Okay. Well, the other thing, I'm not sure whether most of you are aware of this, but I've had the pleasure of driving that property for the last 15 years. Right now, you can cross, at just about any time of year, all three of those crossings over the existing pavement. There's failing culvert pipes and whatnot there. So, I guess I want to keep the perspective on the emergency end of this. In the event of an emergency, I doubt very highly that an emergency vehicle couldn't get across those crossings, at least two of them, that I'm aware of. I know one is a little trickier. I've done it in a four-wheel drive SUV on more than one occasion, as has the farmer with his farm equipment for however many years. Mr. Tucker and his family have been farming that, so I, I want to just try and ma- maybe manage the expectation.
How would you access, assuming you could do that, but how would you access it at that point? If your road's at this elevation, and the stream bed's at this elevation, how do you access it?
Scott, I'm not, I, I don't think-
But you made the point, so how would you access it?
No, the point is, I think there are plenty of, of locations close to where these are, where we're going to grade it back down to the natural break. It's not going to be 10 feet high, 50 feet away. It's going to be graded up to where they approach it.
If it's 300 feet away, you would propose then making a hard surface to get to that? Is that what you're proposing?
Again, what I'm trying to say is, if, if the question is what happens in a, in an absolute catastrophe, I think there are ways to protect health, safety, and welfare that are absent bringing in the Army Corps with an inflatable pontoon bridge that they use in World War II. That's, I guess, that's what I'm trying to get to.
You're going to propose that in some fashion? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm not proposing. What I'm saying is, unless, unless you've got the same proposals from other places where, where those events happen, I don't know how that should be-
I think the attorney said, in, in Covet Bridge, we have hard surfaces, the transverse. Could use that as an example. I think at Morgate, Teconic, there's a hard surface to, to navigate. So, if you're proposing here an alternative hard surface, that's fine, but I think you have to think it all the way through.
No, I'm not proposing an alternate hard surface at all. I'm not sure that, what type of failure are you talking about that would require a completely separate hard surface in a completely different location? Even if the bridge fails.
That wasn't the point, though. The point we were talking about is, in the event, then what's your alternate means of access? That was what we're discussing, in the event. So you suggested you could navigate that stream in your pickup truck, if that's what you-
Actually, a Toyota Land Cruiser.
There you go, even better.
They're all the same.
So maybe that's something you want to, you know, propose.
The point is, I don't know that I have to propose it. First of all, it was never asked as a-
Just to, just to clarify what my question was. My question was maybe more, I don't want to say philosophical. My question was, is it appropriate, because we have a subdivision with three bridges, that in the consideration of emergency access, or the ability of residents to leave in the event of some type of emergency, to, to have a plan if more than one of those bridges is out? And it sounds like there isn't a standard that says, yes, you have to have a plan if more than one is out.
I think our consultant used the, what's a very legal term, a reasonable expectation, a reasonable person's expectation of what could be appropriate. And I think that's where this discussion has gone to, is just, is there a need where a reasonable person think that in a-
That's my question. Do we need to, do we need to have this document consider it?
Chances of that are probably in most reasonable persons' minds.
Very small. Okay, all right.
Just to go back, and I remember we keep having that discussion, and I don't disagree that it's, it's a concern. We met with, okay, years ago, during the DEIS process, we may recall, the fire department to discuss this project.
Okay.
We talked about certain things like emergency access. We circulated that document to all those agencies. That concern was not, concerned to the fire department. I think the fire department and those emergency responders are the people that are going to deal with that first, and can understand if a tree falls in the road and is blocking the road, they know how to move it quickly. If two fall in two locations, and there's an isolated pocket of 80 homes of people who are calling each other on their cell phone, saying, you know, "We got to get out of here, what are we going to do?" I think there's a fire truck on its way. I mean, we, we understand the concern, and we didn't, we didn't look at it lightly. But I believe the emergency responders are the people that are dealing with that scenario. And if there's a reasonable expectation, or, you know, where something catastrophic could happen, I think there's more problems in not just our development, but, but elsewhere. So I want to kind of focus on what it is we need to respond to. I think we've responded to that comment before. I don't think we, we have. It's, there's a section in our DEIS, and it's never been raised again by the fire department or the emergency responders.
I think it was just brought up for the discussion.
So, do you think we need, no, do you, I, I don't, if there's something I could do?
I, again, am just going to say what I said a minute ago, which is, I was asking our town professional whether we needed to consider that, and his answer to me was, you would only need to consider it if a reasonable person would think more than one would go out at the same time. And I think we came to the conclusion that's probably not reasonable. So, I think it was asked, and I'm comfortable with the answer. And I don't think you have to do anything else for your document. Okay.
Thank you.
So, Justin, Justin, to close that out, that, uh, basically, an evacuation plan is forthcoming at some point. On the bridge maintenance plan, the long-term, it's, that is acceptable. It's DOT, a DOT sanctioned plan. The only, the only thing I would say, I think in the, in the response, you referred to the 2008 version. If you, if you're wording such as 2008 or current version-
Agreed.
Because that's subject to update, you know, we don't want-
Or most current.
10 years from now, you're referring back to 2008. There's a new one out. The realignment of 216 at Route 52, that's the preferred, that has been clarified as the preferred alternative at this stage. I understand you're in negotiations or in, having talks with DOT, you think you?
Mr. Collins is here.
You have not even-
We're, we're just going to ask you to come up to the mic for us, if you don't mind.
I have to apologize, I forgot to introduce him earlier, John Collins, Baser Engineering.
The, the issue of the alignment, we talked to DOT several years back, not recently. But it's, it's our anticipation that that's our preferred scheme. They said had no reasons not to approve it before. You know that they are on the man, on the staff, and until this process goes forward, they don't really want to entertain more detailed look at it.
Understood. The, the only other point I, I would have on that is that, I'll just request that any, any correspondence with DOT, we don't necessarily have to be present, but at least, you know, any correspondence-
I'm going to have you in the same room, because you can talk your language very nicely.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
That's for the town's benefits, at least we know what, what is going on.
Okay.
No, I was going to ask, but the, the land across is part of this, at least is part of the initial offer, right? That there-
You mean to straighten the road, so it comes out at a, at a right, right angle instead of a-
The right angle, that, that, that land donation versus-
We control that land as part of this acquisition from the Tucker family. We have the land, there's about three acres of land in a lot there. That would more than accommodate the geometric.
Otherwise, you couldn't-
And that is part of this initial offer, with the understanding that DOT would then have to step in and act, right?
Right.
It's not like an eminent domain, or-
No, 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 it did-
Okay, thank you.
There's no outside taking.
Yep.
All it requires is the permitting from the DOT.
Okay.
The land is under, land is under the applicant's control.
That was not availed, that, that was straightforward. When I read it, I thought, that's what I think it's saying, but, okay, thank you. That's discussed, yeah.
The last, the last comment or observation I have, you make reference to the, the, um, the traffic impact study, basically saying that volumes have not increased between 2009 and 2014. Is there any, why, why wouldn't you take it out to the current time, 2017?
That was based upon information we had from DOT at that time, and that was their most recent counts, 2014.
2009? Oh, 2014. So that's the most recent.
I mean, that was the most recent information they had on the roadway system. We did not do new counts.
Any thoughts of putting a, just on Route 52, for example, just for comparison's sake? Of putting a?
I, I.
I'm sorry, a tube. Is there any, any consideration to put in a tube count, say, on Route 52, just to, you know, verify the counts?
I'll check, I'll check since I wrote the letter, whether or not did they have done new counts?
The thing, the thing that we're looking at from the town's perspective, we're going to have a gap. You know, we're going to have, we can justify, or it has been justified up to 2014, but it'll probably be, but definitely 2017 and possibly 2018 before, you know, when this kick off. So we're going to have a four-year gap, a three-year or a four-year gap, you know, which, it doesn't take that much to fill that in, you know, to.
I think, I think I would rather say, at the time we proposed the information to DOT, we would do updated counts.
A verification.
A verification at that particular time, because I don't want to do counts now and then do, two years from now, do counts again. I have no problem doing prior to submission of the permit to DOT, doing an updated count. We're going to, DOT is going to require it anyway.
Have, have you submitted your traffic impact study? Nothing.
Well, the only thing they've gotten is whatever the town sent them. They, so they do have a copy of the study, they do have a copy of the document, because they're an involved agency.
As an interested or involved agent.
Because they're an involved agency, so.
So they may, they may very well ask you to update, update the.
Yeah, at that, at that particular time, we'll just do the update. And we'll submit, whatever information we'll give to DOT, we'll give to the town and to their consultants.
Is that satisfactory, as long as we know the counts are updated prior to?
As long as we know there's, it does not, not, I don't want to say updated, because that implies you're doing, just verify that.
The most current information, right.
So when you say most current information, I'm sorry, so it's, it's not that the applicant?
The answer is, we did submit an application to DOT, because this is considered a major project with DOT. And the initial, what happens is the applicant has to put funding into DOT for their, any review that they've run, and they're, we're backcharged for that time.
But you haven't, you haven't.
But we have done nothing recently.
The review letters we did receive, just so.
Just bear with me one second. So Dave, I'm just clarifying that the traffic counts would be received from, the DOT publishes those, or?
DOT.
When you said they wouldn't have to run the counts, they could use the most recent, what does that mean?
DOT publishes periodically. It's supposed to be once every two years, sometimes three years, but with, you know.
So you're, you're not asking the applicant even to run new counts, you're just saying use whatever the most current available is from the state agency.
Well, what I'm saying is if, if it's available from the state agency after 2014, which is, which they're saying is the latest DOT counts, then the applicant should put out a tube counter. We're not asking to do turn and movement counts, just put out a tube counter on Route 52 and compare the daily counts with those of 2009. So at least we have an idea, you know.
Because this study is based on 2009.
Yeah, right, right. And that's just to find out how, what is the variance in traffic volume?
Right, they indicate they would do that when they go to finalize the intersection application.
And that, that is, that's, that's acceptable. DOT has not signed up on their traffic impact study yet, so.
In other words, what's going to happen, we could do the count now, or two years from now, when we go to DOT for the actual construction permit, they're going to ask us to do updated counts.
Okay.
To verify whatever the design conditions are. At that time, we will submit that information to both the DOT and to the town concurrently, so everyone's on the same page.
Okay. So is that something that we need referenced in this document, that we're accepting the 2014 numbers, but that updated counts would be presented at the point where application, final documentation's provided to DOT?
Yeah, construction permit from DOT is to be obtained. Any information we submit is part of that process, we will give that information to the town.
Okay. So do we want that added to this document, just a comment to that effect?
Yeah, just, just a comment. I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, one, just with regard to the emergency crossing, you, you did want them to add a plan for a single bridge outage?
Again, I, I'll defer to, you know, my colleagues here. Is that, is that appropriate to ask at this stage, or would that come, you know, later?
Well, I think as part of, I was trying to remember exactly how we handled this, as part of this, if we had it as part of the scoping document, we had talked about having some description of emergency access. They provided some description of emergency access already.
I mean, I would just assume wherever the bridge ends, people to the east of the bridge go out through Summit, people to the west of the bridge go out to 52. Is it that simple, or is there something else?
I think that's in there.
No, I'm just asking, like, is that, that seems like that's fairly straightforward?
I don't know that there's anything else to say.
Okay.
That sounds, that sounds reasonable.
Okay.
If I might suggest, you know, a schematic or just a plan sheet or a plan view that shows a closure on one of the bridges and the detour routes or the alternate routes.
And we're saying as part of this document, is that what you're saying? Rather than the subdivision.
Or representation is going to be provided.
That it'll be provided through that, yeah. I said earlier that the homeowners association would have that plan and we would be part of your offering.
So just a reference that the homeowners association will have an evacuation plan, that's fine.
Yeah.
You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Dave, was there anything else that you would need to be able to consider the document complete from a traffic perspective?
No, I believe everything else was addressed, or has been addressed in earlier discussion.
Okay. So I know that you only received these comments this evening. We'll provide a final draft, is this the final, I'm sorry, is this the final draft? Okay.
But from what I understand, so we can be clear, we gave you responses and clarified, there's nothing more.
There's two things you will add to the document. You're going to make a reference that the homeowners association will contain the emergency exit.
Right.
Access, and you were going to make a reference to the updated traffic counts.
Correct.
To compare back to 2009, at the point where you move forward with the DOT.
Well, the, the 2008 or most current DOT, well, no, there were three things then.
2009, 2009 was your original, original count.
No, I was talking about your maintenance manual. You talked about three things.
2014 was DOT count.
Okay.
Which was, which showed, or was stated, does not show any increase from 2009 to 2014. Our request at this point is, well, just fill in the gap between 2014 until now, or till we make the formal application to DOT for the highway work permit.
So there will be a response that says that's what we will do when we make the application for the highway work permit? The other comment you made was regarding.
Just to be specific, you're comparing back to 2009 when you do that. Okay.
The other comment was reference to the maintenance manual guidelines. You said, don't use 2008, use the most current. I just have to.
That's what I'm saying, is to say 2008 is specific.
Right, or most current.
Five years from now, DOT updates their, their manual. You're still referring by, just say, you know, 2008 or the most current.
There's three things, we'll provide those in here. Yep.
Okay. Michael, you said you had a couple of additional questions?
One is the schools. I know that there was, like, per the national model, it comes out 107 kids. And then you guys did this study that results in 59 kids using four local, do you guys happen to remember, what were the four local subdivisions that were used for that study?
You're referring back to the DEIS and our impact on the schools.
Yes.
Which is a section of that document. What's the question?
The question is, I, I know that the national model says that it would generate eighty, 107 kids, per the standard model that's used, but then you guys did this study of four local subdivisions, and you said that the number that would be more reasonable to expect is 59. Do you happen to remember, I went back in all the documentation, and you're right, some of it's quite old, is what were the four that were used for that? Do you remember?
That's not, what, what we used were the Rutgers numbers. Those are CUPR, Center of Urban Policy Research, published a study in 2006, who lives in New York and New Jersey, based on evaluating, it wasn't just four developments, it was the census data, right? And they gave you school-aged children per household. And it's based on the value of the home, the type of home, the number of bedrooms in the home.
So, I'm sorry, so I misread that completely.
Yeah, I, no, you got to be.
There was no separate study using four local housing projects.
Is he saying that we got to age? So then, you know what, I'd have to rely on.
Do you remember what I'm talking about, Mark, am I nuts?
No, you're not.
Yeah, well, it could be.
No.
Let's not rule it out, but this is not proven. I was just curious, what, what were those four? And I think we can agree that there is a range there, right? Nobody knows for certain how many kids are going to be generated. All right. And then have, have we talked to the schools since then? I mean, I, I just feel like.
Some of those developments are finished, so we can know.
Yeah, so this is really more of our, I'm sorry. Mark, what were you going to say, or, oh, you look like you were about, okay.
Found what you were talking about, so I have an idea what you're.
It's not in that one, the four, it's not in there. It alludes to.
It looks like it was a response to maybe a later comment or something, because it's not in this.
And then the last, the minor point tied to the 122, do we, do we even agree what the number of buildable acres is?
What we agree is that 122 is the maximum number of units they can build. And it is based on the buildable acres.
And so the buildable acres is.
Number, we had to, we did an exercise where they laid out all the land that could be buildable, they came in with 138, whatever the number was.
Okay.
And we went back and forth and came down to whatever.
Yes, right.
Okay.
There's an ESL, environmentally sensitive land calculation that has to be done to get there.
Okay, so with that, that number is agreed.
From compelling environmental impact reason that you have to adjust that.
Okay.
That would be the asset right there.
Thank you, that's it.
I thought you had three, was that all three?
No, the third one was the Route 52, and that, but we told, we touched on that.
So are we going to find out about the schools?
You know, I think we owe, we as a board, I'll, I'll take that to, we owe them as courtesy as to say, we, you know.
But it's been a long time.
It's been a while, but guys, it's, you know, it's coming back, and here it is, and FYI, and I'm sure we'll get them.
Well, most school districts are going to give you the same letter with all the gap.
Exactly.
They have to educate wherever a child comes, and that based in the normal operation of the school system.
Right.
They expect a certain population each year, so.
Got enough of those that I was thinking about wallpapering.
And then everybody goes with that letter, goes back to the school boards, said, did you do that? Then they say, we never sent them any, and then it's all of that.
And that's what happened, yeah.
Right, right, I think we owe them.
So.
That's with us now, you guys, we owe them.
All right, so is there any takeaway for this applicant with regard to school districts? Or is that question sufficiently answered in the existing document?
No, but, no, but I, I will say, I think.
No, it's not, or?
No, I'm saying, I think we should contact them, and there is still their, their input could be considered to be, but I, I think Tom called, I think what we're going to, what's going to result in that.
It's in the original record.
Right, so I'm.
Yeah, it's from how long ago?
But the status is from this, this development hasn't changed.
Which is a salient point.
But time has changed.
Is the district in a different position now?
Different school board, it's a different.
But this project has some rights that's in the process of pursuing it, so that was the referral to them and that was the answer. I'm, you know.
All right. Also, wait a minute. The purpose of that process, if I may.
And I already know what I'm hoping.
Hold on, I think our attorney is saying the issue's closed. If that's the case, we're done.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Okay. So I think we've heard.
You can answer formally, but it's not going to change the record. And I'll just pick it up. Whatever.
Okay. So I think we've gone through now all of our professionals' comments, our board's questions. Does anybody have any additional questions? Okay, so it seems like there are some minor things that you'll provide to us, a couple of updated maps, some narrative comments, some clarifications in your document. It doesn't seem large to me. Michelle, in terms of process, I'm assuming we need to receive that update from the applicant before we would schedule them for a determination of completeness, but as long as we receive that information.
How quickly do you guys think you can get it to us?
The boss back there is going to say that that'll be within the next week or two. I would think that that's reasonable, but I think we have an option that we wanted you to consider. I'll let Dominic lay it out and see if that's something we, we could work towards, because we did that with the last DEIS.
Yeah.
We were in the same kind of point, and we were just about to move the ball forward, and we owed you, you know, three or four things.
Yeah, as Mark was explaining, you know, one option for the board to consider would be to conditionally accept the document, subject to the board's consultants verifying the additional information that's been added, which we discussed tonight.
I'm not sure how that would be different than, I mean, aside from timing, what, what exactly are you asking us to do as of right now?
To take a vote, to conditionally.
We would, we would use a resolution, though, to approve completeness, so I don't believe we have.
I would only worry that there might be an inference of an impermissible delegation of the board's authority on that. You know, I had some litigation, not on this particular point, but issuing, we got into the point of whether the board impermissively delegated, because we don't know the content, I'm sure they'll be fine, but the board really doesn't know the content of it. So I think the chair was probably going to propose a very short turnaround date, so if you got that material.
What I was going to say is there, there are more things here than I would do by a verbal motion to condition for. If we need to condition for it, we would need to draft a resolution. I think regardless of whether you had everything here tonight, we would still want to use a resolution to finalize this document, make a determination of completeness, so we would put it on to a future date. It's up, I guess I would say it's up to you. If you don't want conditions, if you can turn it around and give our, our professionals a little bit of time to review it, I mean, we've got a, we've got a meeting on June 6th, we've got a meeting on June 20th. And if you thought you could have that information to us shortly, that would give our professionals time to clear out their comment letters and.
So, so if they have their letters here in two weeks, it'll be on the June 6th agenda.
We would appreciate that, thank you.
But we need, you got two weeks to receive it, and then.
As long as they have enough time to respond and accept that.
I think that would, that would probably work time-wise during two weeks.
And with the, with the understanding that if you don't provide something that we spoke about tonight, the professionals would need to issue another letter, and any determination for the document would be a conditional determination.
Understood.
Can I make one request? Can we work directly with, obviously, the planning board chair, but also submit directly,
Can we work directly with, obviously, the planning board chair, but also submit directly electronically so that we can get a quick review?
We'd like you to submit to our planning office and then they will distribute out to our professionals. We need, we need to be able to keep our record clean. We, we don't want to have you have separate information. That's not to stop you from having productive conversation with our professionals, I'm not saying that. But please make sure that if you're doing that, just copy our, you're looking at me funny.
No.
Oh, okay.
But, and I understand the importance of paper and all of this, but I, could I request that soft copy?
Yes.
And also from our professionals? Couple days in advance.
So, so what we'll do is, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll put it in for June 6th for the determination of completeness. And again, if something happens and you need it moved, please just stay in touch with us.
Of course.
But we'll assume that within the next week or two, you'll get us back the information that we spoke of tonight.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Some of the information that we're going to get back is like how they came up with that eighty thousand dollars.
Two additional, say it again?
How they came up with that eighty thousand dollar number and.
The derivation of the sinking fund, I think, was the eighty, sinking fund was the eighty thousand. Yes. There were some additional clarifications, there was some narrative needed.
Where that number came from.
Yeah, and by the way, it's, it's, a lot of the stuff, we said, okay, let me go back and reread that. If we have additional questions, we funnel, we funnel them through Pam and then out again.
Or Michelle, yes.
Okay.
We're, we're hoping that there's no more additional questions.
Because we want to be able to get to that, I understand. And just, what I thought I heard and I read in Michelle's letter was that some of these additional questions and items that need to be clarified are also clarified further when we get to a finding statement. It's very clear as to what's occurring, so.
You say a lot, two or three pages.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Great. That was the last, I guess, only item on our agenda tonight.
Were there any John Jay students?
I don't see any tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?